Good evening. My name is Brandon Monk and I serve as Chair of the Frederick County School Board, and today is Tuesday, May the 16th, and it's about 6:00 PM, and I will call our meeting to order. Do we have an agenda before us? Are there any amendments to the agenda? All right, seeing none, is there...
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is being properly seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, dismissals, resignations (information only), and substitutes pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A1, and to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic records, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A2, and to review plans related to school safety and security pursuant to the public safety and security exemption of Virginia Code Section 2.237-11A19.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been made and properly seconded to move into closed session for the reasons that the Vice Chair mentioned. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We are in closed session until approximately 7:00 PM.
I move that the Board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene from closed session. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are reconvened.
I move that, to the best of each Board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the School Board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second confirming the discussion of our closed session. Madam Clerk?
Roll call vote. Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right.
I move that the Board recess its meeting until 7:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion to second to recess until 7:00 PM. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're in recess until 7:00 PM.
I move that the Board reconvene its meeting.
Second.
We have a motion to reconvene. It's been seconded and discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are reconvened.
We have two motions coming out of closed session. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, those are approved.
And I move to approve the release of students A, B, and C from compulsory attendance for religious reasons.
Second.
Motion is being properly seconded to approve the release of students A, B, and C from compulsory attendance for religious reasons. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a... Next on our agenda is the moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Will you please join me in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have a consent agenda before us. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda is passed. Next, we have the opportunity for student and staff recognition. I will turn it over to Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am very honored and privileged to announce a couple administrative recommendations for hire, and then we also have a staff recognition that I also want to acknowledge as well. So first, we have the naming of our Shorando High School new principal. We're very excited. Mrs. Karen McCoy, if you don't mind coming on up here to the podium, please. I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Karen McCoy. As the next principal at Shorando High School, Ms. McCoy has dedicated the majority of her career to Frederick County public schools. In addition to serving the past 12 years as an assistant principal at Shorando, Ms. McCoy was previously a teacher and assistant director of student activities at Shorando and a teacher at Indian Hollow Elementary School. Ms. McCoy will transition to her new position on July 1st, and please join me in welcoming Ms. McCoy to her new role. Thank you, Ms. McCoy. All right, thank you, Mrs. McCoy. Definitely some huge shoes to fill, but her legacy is going to get started on July 1st. We're very excited for what she's going to bring to Frederick County and the Shorando community. Thank you again very, very much. Next up, we have James Wood Middle School. We have the announcement of the new principal there, and if you can come on up, Mrs. Tara Wooliver, that would be great. Pleased to announce the appointment of Mrs. Tara Wooliver as the principal of James Wood Middle School. Mrs. Wooliver is returning to Frederick County public schools after serving as an assistant principal in Loudoun County for the past seven years. Mrs. Wooliver began her teaching career at James Wood High School, then moved to Millbrook High School, and previously served as the instructional supervisor for Frederick County public schools. She will begin her position on July 1st, and again, please welcome Mrs. Wooliver to Frederick County public schools. If you don't mind, before you head back to your seat, because we're all about family, if you don't mind introducing your family, I would... That would be great.
I am incredibly proud to be supported by so many folks. I have my father, Scott Snapp. I have my husband, Travis Wooliver. Oh. I have my daughter, Emily Wooliver, who will graduate from Shorando High School and is delighted by Ms. McCoy's announcement. I have my other daughter, Maddie Wooliver, who just graduated from JMU. And then I have my father-in-law, Carl Wooliver, is here. And then I also have the support of my current principal, Kevin Tyson, at John Champ High School.
Thank you for me.
Thank you so much.
And Ms. McCoy, I don't know, did you have any family that you would like to introduce as well?
Everyone is working together. There we go, there we go.
We're all here to support you. We're all your family, right? There we go. All right, so I have two other announcements, Mr. Chair. In addition, I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Alyssa McKee as assistant principal of James Wood High School. Alyssa, if you don't mind coming up to the podium, please. Let's give her a round of applause. Ms. McKee has dedicated her entire career to Frederick County public schools. In addition to her current position as a senior teacher at Admiral Byrd Middle School, Ms. McKee previously taught at James Wood High School. Ms. McKee will begin transitioning into her new position at the end of the school year, and again, please join me in welcoming Ms. McKee into her new role. Thank you for being here. Okay. All right, and before we jump into student recognitions, Mr. Chair, I did want to recognize an individual for a great accomplishment. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here because he had some work to do in regards to this new recognition that he received, but Mr. Brian Thomas from James Wood High School, he did receive the Computer Science Teacher of the Year for the State of Virginia. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge him and his outstanding achievement, and as I mentioned, he's unable to be here this evening, but this is a huge achievement for one of our teachers, one of our own. We'll try to get him to come out, maybe at a future Board meeting, but he had something this Board meeting, and then he had something the next Board meeting, and he's doing a lot of preparations for this huge, huge accomplishment, so please pass that along from myself, and we can definitely work out him coming in a future event. So let's give him a round of applause in case he's watching. Okay. All right. Now, I do want to recognize some of our students. Very, very excited. I am going to go ahead and read this little statement here, and then I'm going to ask the Chair and myself to go down and take some pictures for some students and some recognition. So, welcome to our Awards of Excellence program. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect for each individual who is going to be recognized. Once we have completed all of the presentations, we will give you an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. Also, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with me and Mr. Monk for a photograph, and then move to the right, remain at the front, and we'll take a photo of the entire group being recognized. Okay? So we're going to head on down, and then I'm going to have Mrs. Scott read off the names.
In April, students from Dal J Howard Center traveled to Virginia Beach to participate in the Skills USA Virginia State Competition. The results are as follows. Kathryn Combs, sixth place for collision repair technology. Shane Beasley, third place for automotive maintenance and light repair.
Although Emily Clark could not be with us tonight, she was the second-place winner for the automotive refinishing and technology. She is also the state runner-up. And then if we could have Javier Landers come down, he is first place for automotive service technology. Javier is also the state champion. As a result of this, Javier will be competing in the national championship in Atlanta, Georgia in June. At this time, please join me in welcoming American Heart Association Director of School Engagement, Gina Washington. Gina is here this evening to recognize the top three schools that participated in the Jump Rope for Heart fundraiser. At this time, I'd also like to invite the following individuals to come forward: from Bass Hoover Elementary School, Assistant Principal Heather Hess; PE teacher Colby Schlag; students Eleanor Eam and Raiden Ro Truck. Sorry. And Eleanor actually is not able to be with us tonight. My apologies to Raiden. Yes, and if... Could you please stay up here, because we're going to get a group photo at the end. Thank you. All right. From Armel Elementary School, if I could have PE teacher Jason Cressiter, and then students Bryant Fitzgerald, Kipton Fitzgerald, and Caleb Byer. These students were also the top fundraisers at Armel Elementary School. And from Robert E. Ailer Middle School, if Assistant Principal Dr. Marcy Simmons could come forward; PE teacher Jessica Allen, and student Ella Keaton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I had for staff and student recognitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Appreciate it. Want to take an opportunity... It's ironic that we just ended with Jump Rope for Heart, because our new principal at Shorando High School used to be a student at Indian Hollow Elementary School and participated in Jump Rope for Heart with Mrs. McCoy, so super excited to have Mrs. McCoy on board, and congratulations on your new role, Ms. Wooliver and Mrs. Wooliver. Congratulations on your role. Excited to have you back to the county, and Ms. McKee as well. Thank you. The students at our competition there with Skills USA greatly looking forward to seeing all that you're going to do in our community moving forward in the skilled trades with workplace readiness skills that you've developed, and super excited about the accomplishments that you've had, and looking forward to seeing how you do in Atlanta to be a champion at work there. So congratulations on a job well done. Welcome to our community. We've got some amazing students that you get to work with, and you can see that every day, so thank you so much. And to our schools that are participating so well in Jump Rope for Heart, I know maybe I might be a little out of shape. I don't know that I can do quite what I did in elementary school, but such important work there and recognition for those staff and students as well, so thank you for everyone. Board member comments around those?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I want to say thank you. Jump Rope for Heart, it's just amazing, you know. Millions of people die every year of heart disease. It's one of the biggest killers in the country, and I'm glad we're taking steps forward to do that. And recognition to our CTE program, this is yet another reason why we should be focusing more and more on our CTE programs. We have students that placed really, really well in the state competition. We have one going to nationals. Anytime you guys want to work on a truck, I take mine on the trail lot and beat it up, so please, please, please put me on the books. But thank you, guys, for all that you do, all the hard work you guys put in. It does go very recognized on this Board. Thank you.
All right. Well... Yes.
She wants to say something.
Sure. If we... Absolutely. If you could come forward, share some information. Sounds like you are very proud of the student there and looking forward to sharing some context information. If you could just speak in the microphone, we've got some folks that are viewing live online.
Great. Hi, I'm Kristy Landers. I'm the mother of Javier Landers, who will be going and participating and competing at nationals. I just wanted to say that I'm so pleased, my husband and I, with the program at Dal J, because other counties, such as Clark County and other counties, do not have such a program, and this program is so wonderful for these students, because especially nowadays, there's not... It's not all about just going to college and, you know, there are other... So many careers out there, and they need, you know, successful technicians in all fields. So I wanted to thank Mr. Pulis. He's taught Javier for a couple of years, and he's just been such a support and has taught him so much and been such a positive role model. And then I haven't yet met the principal at Dal J, but I've heard a lot about him. And I wanted to say thank you to him as well. He is doing a great job in supporting the students, because he actually went to the state competition in Virginia Beach, and I think both Mr. Pulis and...
Mr. Thompson.
Sorry. Mr. Thompson are both planning on going to the competition to support Javier and the program in Atlanta, so I just wanted to give them a round of applause, because they are just amazing in supporting the students and teaching them. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
No, thank you. I will share that this year I won't be able to attend the NLC in Atlanta, Georgia, but was there last year, and so when you get there, the Georgia World Congress Center is just phenomenal, the expo, the work that those students are doing, so super excited that you'll have the opportunity to represent us here in Frederick County at that level. So congratulations, and thank you for the work that you're doing to empower students every day. With that, if you were recognized and have other plans this evening, now would be the time of the program that might be appropriate if you would like to step out, and we'll continue on for those who wish to stay. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Welcome home.
I remember our conversation at Shorando back in the fall. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure.
I'll be over.
So good.
That's great.
George, get hired.
All right. Wonderful. That was great. Next is our citizen and staff comments portion. We have a few folks that have signed up. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive, excuse me, public comments at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the Board sufficient time for its other business, the total time allowed for public comment will generally be limited to 20 minutes. Individuals speaking to the Board will be allotted three minutes, and those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the Chair, the speaker will clearly state their name, residing district, and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the Chair, and the Board will receive comments but not respond to questions or engage in dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the Board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or appropriate committees. The School Board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens, and speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to our Board in return. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the Speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. School Board meetings are taped recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of the official minutes. All right, first speaker we have is Effunus. If you could come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and let me hear your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Frank Funus, Gainesboro District. I relocated here to Winchester from Metropolitan New York to get a change of environment, to enroll my son in the school system. We wanted to partake in Winchester and try to enjoy and contribute whatever we could. That opportunity arose one day when I was at Fireman's Festival, and I spoke to a lady named Diana, who brought up the fact that the school system was lacking in bus drivers. Being a veteran from Vietnam tours, an ironworker, underwater salvage, a welder, equipment operator, throughout my career of a multitude of decades, I felt that maybe I could help out and fill a slot in the bus company. Little did I realize that there is so much entailed in being a bus driver, not just driving a piece of equipment, but dealing with dirty kids in the back of your bus. You're a first aid, you're a referee, you are a psychologist. It just amazes me how much I took for granted the position of a bus driver. The only problem is, after listening to last meeting and the budget, there was so much detail for the teachers, for the construction of like James Wood High School, which my son is enrolled in, it looks like the Taj Mahal. There was a fact of a parking lot, and really didn't contribute to expanding for student body, which Winchester is expanding without a doubt. But even with my experience in all the other professions that I had, I was given the opportunity to drive a bus, and I was put in a position where I was making like $15 an hour. For the responsibility that I have taken on, I don't understand, even with my background and all my experience, that budget for the bus driver, which is really old, it's almost got 300,000 miles on it, I was a little taken back. The Teachers' Union is here, you know, they're a group en masse, they are looking for benefits. I'm making $100 a week. My medical coverage is taking most of my salary. I just think that your unsung heroes, the bus drivers, really aren't being appreciated. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Funus, and thank you for your service as a bus driver and joining ranks this year, and definitely something that our Board, I think, will continue to look Next, we have Tim from Bat Creek.
I wrote it down this time, so I didn't forget things. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, on March 22nd, 23, Mr. Lamotta, interim superintendent for the Frederick County Schools, made a statement at the Board of Supervisors meeting. It's 1 hour, 19 minutes, and 18 seconds into the meeting, for those that want to go back and review it. CRT is not taught in our schools, so I ask this Board to set a motion, even though it's not being taught in the schools, to make a policy that CRT is not in our schools. This Board has always stated that it's a policy board. If you're not teaching it, it shouldn't be a problem. By having this policy, it would eliminate future questions and disputes in anything by having a policy. And keep in mind that as members of the Board, as you can see all around every place, there's pictures of everybody. So you get your picture on the wall, so your decisions that you make on a daily basis is always remembered, both be in a supermarket or selling corn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tim. All right, further comments? All right. Next, we will move to our reports. Reporter, the Superintendent, Dr. Hummer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple items that I wanted to mention. It is May, and we have a lot of graduations coming up, so I want to congratulate our fifth and eighth grade students who are making the exciting transition to middle and high school at such an exciting time of their academic careers. But I also want to congratulate our graduating seniors for this milestone accomplishment and wish them the best in their future endeavors. Hard work does pay off, and I'm more and more impressed every day with the level of work that our students do on a daily basis. You all should be very, very proud of yourselves, and I'm looking forward to celebrating with each and every one of you at graduations in a couple of weeks. So thank you. So thank you all so much. Next, I wanted to provide an update to my entry plan. If you recall, I've been spending the last 100 days listening and evaluating in order to put together a plan that I'll be presenting to you all, the board, next month on how we're going to make Frederick County the best school division in the Commonwealth. We just finished our last listening tour last Thursday and the feedback we've been receiving is going to be an integral part of this plan. I also wanted to mention that I will be continuing with this community engagement beyond my entry plan because this communication and gathering feedback and input from all constituents of our school division and community is very, very important. I'm going to be conducting advisory committees, we're going to be having town halls, monthly opportunities to meet with me, as well as the online survey, which will stay active on our website as we continue to gather feedback from each and every one of you. Thank you again for having me and again, I'm very, very thankful for this opportunity. I also wanted to share that before you in new business, you have a school board superintendent communication plan that we developed after our board retreat a little over a month ago. As I've shared and exhibited for each of you, communication is very, very important to me and the success of our students is directly linked to making sure we do it effectively and efficiently. I've outlined specific details on what we're currently doing to make sure we are consistent with our communication practices and this communication plan is up for adoption under new business this evening. I'm looking forward to further discussion and feedback to ensure our communication continues to support our growth and development of our school division. Lastly, we do have on Wednesday, May 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we are hosting a special education virtual interview fair. So for those listening, if you are interested, please tune in and we are going to be conducting screenings and then we'll work collaboratively with building level leaders to conduct a full interview with all candidates selected from the initial interview process. So I just wanted to make sure we mentioned that. And, Mr. Chair, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. And, well, Chair, we are excited to have you and thank you for droning our ranks.
Thank you, sir.
Looking forward to the entry. All right. Under unfinished business, this is the second reading of Policy 116P bylaws, board minutes, recording votes, and tie votes. This has been before the board at our last meeting. Again, board members have had an opportunity to review it and it is online as well and we actually have a copy before us. A minor change just due to state code. Any questions about the policy?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just for reference, who is our tiebreaker? Who is the tiebreaker?
On a board?
So as far as I underst... Mr. Chair, if you...
Yeah, Dr. Hammer.
According to how the code reads, it's if we had all of our members here, but since we have an odd number of members, we wouldn't need a tiebreaker. If we had a board member that wasn't present and if there is a tie, it would then have to go to a next meeting for conversation. That's as far as I am aware, but since we have an odd number of members of the board, that will never be an issue for us as far as I know. Mr. Lee.
Yeah, I was going through this and so I was thinking about the situation where we may have a full board, but we may have a member abstained from voting and then we would have a tie. And then it does bring up the question about tiebreak. Tiebreak would only come on the second meeting, as I understand, but as I also understand through some going back through the history of, this board has not established a tiebreak that I know of. So something to ponder. Well, I don't mind going ahead and approving the policy for its second reading, but I also think we should bring back an action of later establishing a tiebreak. I don't know if we would wait until a January reorg meeting or I don't know if we would do that now because there was some thought at one point of actually, you know, January type reorg meeting, establishing a policy coordinator, a board member being a policy coordinator. And then along with that, that person maybe or maybe not, but then establishing a tiebreak. So there has been some discussion in the past on this, it just, I'm not sure it ever got past go, but something we could maybe bring back. But I would, Mr. Chairman, I would certainly vote in favor of going ahead with the policy as modified.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Lake.
Second. Was that a formal motion or was that...
I didn't receive it as one. Nope.
Just to point out too, I mean, this is already policy, we're just talking about a code reference change to it, so we're not changing or adding in anything about tiebreaking that isn't already there. And so the way that it's currently worded is that if there is no tiebreaker and there were to be a tie, it would be defeated. So I think, you know, maybe we could look into it a little bit further and see who would qualify as a tiebreaker to see if we want to revisit that at another time, but the way that it stands, I think that we're fine to go ahead and move forward with this thing as it's just a legal reference change. So I would move that we approve Policy 116P bylaws, board minutes, recording votes, and tie votes as presented.
All right, motion's been properly seconded to approve Policy 116P bylaws, board minutes, recording votes, and tie votes. We've had discussion about it. Any further questions? All right, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the policy as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Policy is approved. Next, we're moving to new business and we have a couple committee reports. The first is the committee report of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, which met on May the 3rd.
Mr. Chairman, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on May 3rd. The meeting was called to order at 4:32 p.m. and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Christman reviewed the status of the capital projects list to include projects funded by S R 2 and S R 3 funds. Dr. Hammer and Mr. Lee provided an update to the truncated rezoning plan. Phase one of the plan is complete. Phase two is in progress at the cropper offices. The capacity study begins with school visits on May 25th and 26th. The project completion date is the end of June. The rezoning portion of the project costs $25,000 and the program capacity portion of the project costs $10,000. Heard Dr. Hammer review the six items on the capital improvements plan and the annual capital improvements plan process. He shared the top six projects agreed upon by school board members. Dr. Hammer also shared that the Board of Supervisors will be voting for funding for projects on the capital improvements plan. Projects on our capital improvements plan will be dependent upon this outcome. The meeting adjourned at 5:25 p.m. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on May 3rd?
We do have one action item. I would recommend approving the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on May 3rd, 2023.
Our motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the minutes of the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting that was held on May the 3rd. All in favor, say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Next is the report of the Finance Committee, further meeting held on May the 11th.
The Finance Committee met in the Dr. Melton F. Wright Board Meeting Room at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on May 11th. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 p.m. and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Camery reviewed Frederick County Public Schools tuition rates and student fees for 2023-24. Ms. Chapman reviewed the request for proposal, RFP process. Mrs. Camery reviewed the Bright Futures Frederick County Winchester Financial Reporting Change. The new process will involve direct transfers from Frederick County Public Schools and Winchester Public Schools to one private purpose fund managed by Frederick County Public Schools and will streamline how expenditures are paid. Dr. Angelo reviewed the Shenandoah Valley Migrant Education Program. He shared there is a memo of agreement between Frederick County Public Schools and the Shenandoah Valley Migrant Education Program and that four students are eligible for the program. Dr. Angelo shared that James Madison University provides support for the program and is the lead division agent and administrator of the Shenandoah Valley Migrant Education Program. The meeting adjourned at 5:03 p.m. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about the information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on May 11th?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Hammer.
There was an item that came up in regards to the Shenandoah Valley Migrant Educational Program from some board members about how we can do a better job of identifying those students that might benefit from those services and support. So, Dr. Angelo, I'm going to go ahead and chime in and then please feel free to chime in. Dr. Angelo did have a chance to reach out to the representative at James Madison and they agreed there is some more work they can do in regards to outreach and there also is some more work they can do with us in regards to making sure that we're identifying these students accordingly and appropriately because this is the first time that we've ever had any students that we've identified as needing these additional supports and services. So we're going to work very closely with them to hopefully attract and identify those students for those needs. And, Dr. Angelo, please chime in if I missed anything there.
Yes, thank you. The only thing I would add to that is that we are working on scheduling a meeting the week after school is out after June 2nd and they were very excited about strengthening our relationship. So it'll benefit our students for sure. We have had the resources and materials in our counselor's office, so when a student registers, they have that available to them, but she did verify that we have not had a student in the past. But we're excited to be able to work with them. Student support will take the lead on that and that meeting will occur the week after school lets out.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. Thank you, Dr. Angelo.
I've got one last sort of statement because we talked about it at the finance meeting. In this time of year, I'd just like to bring it up again and I think we were all in agreement. But, you know, the 2023-24 tuition rates and student fees, there were a couple changes on some things, but we're adamant about all children being able to be able to participate in all activities. And so I know there's a number of folks that might be watching and I just want to make it known that there is a process to go through should those fees be troublesome and, you know, we've got avenues and outlets to provide those students those activities. So I just want to make it clear that we are very much for all students participating and we just had some slight changes, but just wanted to make that statement. We did have two action items that came out of the board meeting. The first one is to recommend the full board approve the 2023-24 tuition rates and student fees as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I know at the Finance Committee we had talked about the tuition rate for our F C P S employees, so I'd like to see the perspectives of other board members and share my own on this amount, if we can change it, what it will look like in the future.
Sure, thank you, Mrs. White, Mr. Comstock. Did you have it?
I was just going to bring up the same thing. So thank you, Mrs. White. I know there had been some discussion on that committee regarding the tuition rate for F C P S employees and for those that are not present, we do have that in the packet. There's an in-state, out-of-state, and then an employee rate, which is discounted. Currently, the way that it is is that F C P S employees would pay 20% of the in-state rate to have their students come and since the in-state rate has gone up this year, that F C P S employee share would go up as well. So there's some discussion around that and maybe ways to tweak that so that it could be seen as a benefit for the attraction and retention of our teachers, which I'm in favor of. Don't know exactly what that would look like. I know we had talked some and I think was staff going to look at that at all or was it just up to us as a board or was there any feedback from staff about that?
So the feedback that I received and conversations I had with finance and budget would be, again, we can make this happen if this is the desire of the board and it would be an additional incentive for us to consider. I think the more layers that we add, like if we said two years, it gets reduced to this, and another four years, it gets reduced to this, I think that might be a little difficult to track, but if that's something that is the will of the board that we want to do, that's something we can do. I think it would then, again, be a good incentive for our staff. Again, you'll have to factor in as a board the optics of what that would look like, but it potentially would attract more staff and keep more staff here as an additional incentive to take into consideration. So that's kind of where we're at on that and if there is any sort of tiers that you would like for us to consider and do, we can make that work. And then Ms. Camery's here too, in case there's any other input she would like to provide.
Definitely don't want to make it too cumbersome, but I do want it to be a benefit for our people. Did other board members have a...
Mr. Hester.
Yeah, the more I think about it, I think the tiered system would be a little too cumbersome. You know, I am in agreement to providing something we had talked about at the committee meeting, maybe, you know, after a certain period of years. But then also, the more I think about it, just making, this is sort of where I stand, but I'm totally open for it, say, you know, after, say, two years, then it would be taken care of, but making the in-state fee for taking it down to a flat fee. And so like maybe $1,000 for the first two years and then after they've been, the teachers have been with us, say for two years, then they're going forward, it would be taken care of. It's just an idea.
Mr. Chairman, I think our teachers and other staff members are taking care of our children throughout the school year. Many of them are also parents. I believe it's time for us to close the gap for F C P S employees that wish to bring their students to the F C P S school system. As Dr. Hammer stated, that we can get, at our Finance Committee, we can get creative with this benefit, but at the end of the day, we need to take care of our employees that make the day-to-day operations at F C P S possible. The employees that are taking care of our children, I believe this initiative will create more work-life balance for employees, creating a great place to work is key to recruiting and retaining high-quality staff. And delivering meaningful benefits to our employees will help increase positive outcomes and experience. So I would like to make a motion that we waive the tuition fee for F C P S employees with the exception of a one-time registration fee of no more than $500 and direct the superintendent to develop a regulation to establish criteria of where the children of the beneficiaries will be placed, including but not solely limited to overcrowding, seniority, full-time employment status, and other special criteria.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Mrs. White, is that an amendment to the motion that was on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. So the amendment would be simply around the tuition rate change, so we'll take some liberties around...
The in-state.
All right, Mrs. White, you want to restate the motion and maybe someone could take it down since we don't have a copy here and it seems pretty lengthy.
The first part of the motion, this will be a two-part motion. I move that we waive the tuition fee for F C P S employees with the exception of a one-time registration fee of no more than $500.
Mr. Chair, if I may, can we clarify...
Yep, thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mount. Can we clarify for staff that currently have students here, would this be a registration fee for all students? I just want to make sure that we're clear on that and so I'm clear in regards to what we're doing moving forward. So is it for current students that are here and their staff, then it'll just be waived or do they have to go back and just pay the $500 registration? What were your thoughts, Mrs. White?
Well, the second part of the motion would be directing the superintendent to develop a regulation or policy and I guess putting together, we want to make sure that we weren't placing students in schools that were overcrowded so we could develop a way in which the students would be placed at a school with a capacity to hold the student. And we could utilize our finance team to help us decide how that would be paid out. If it would be a one-time $500 payment, could it be taken from each paycheck? Because I know that some of our employees are classified staff and it might be incentive to have it taken a little bit from each paycheck.
Mr. Chair, or Superintendent Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, we'll do whatever is necessary and again, as I shared earlier, I think this is definitely an incentive for our staff. I would, I have some concerns with identifying overcrowded schools, Mrs. White, and again, I think that's definitely something we can do and put a regulation together because a majority of our schools are overcrowded. So, I don't want to pigeonhole just going to one school and then that one school getting overpopulated. I think this regardless is going to impact our schools. I don't think it's going to impact so much at this point, which it's going to put them over the edge, but we can definitely put a regulation together. I just want to be careful with picking and choosing which schools they go to because, especially at the high school level, they're all over capacity.
Correct.
Right? So, I want to make sure that we're not leaving those students out, but we can definitely put a regulation together. I just want to say that upfront in case when we put this together, that it might, there might be a little bit more flexibility there. Just want to add that in.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. Mr. Lake?
Yeah, and if you're going to go forward with some kind of a proposal, a policy or whatever, we certainly got to just consider transportation. We're talking about people coming from outside of the county, possibly outside of the state. And at the meeting the other day, it was brought up about the tax base. Well, the tax base doesn't really apply, so I kind of discarded that because quite frankly, you don't have to own property in Frederick County to have your student educated here. It's just not a requirement. So, the fact that someone from another county or another state does know property here wouldn't be privy to the free and appropriate public education, that doesn't hold water. But, the thing that did come back to me was got to be the sole responsibility of the parents for transportation because we're not going to put a bus at the border and do all that. So, anyway, just something to consider. Looks like there's some digging to do here.
Other comments before I share some thoughts? Mr. Atkins.
To echo Mr. Lake's comments, I think transportation is definitely going to be an issue with this amendment, getting students back and forth. You know, with our schools over capacity as they are, I think bringing students from outside the county is definitely going to hurt us. I'd hate to deprive a child an education in our county to, you know, accommodate somebody from out of the county. Furthermore, my other part about this is, is this for all FCPS employees to include part-time employees?
That's what the regulation would allow us to develop a policy and procedure of XYZ and to include the transportation piece.
Yeah, and, you know, to come back to it, you know, I've definitely, I agree with you, it would make for a better home work-life balance. I think there's a lot of positives in this. I just think that before we could vote on this, I think we should have that clear-cut policy in place. That way, there is no questions out there and, you know, we're doing the best for the people here in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Lake, should we?
Yeah, just something that just came to me. We at least should run it by VHSL to see what we're doing here. We're talking about residents, non-Fredrick County residents, possibly playing on our sports teams and quite frankly, that's called recruiting. It's just the truth and we would have to really get some good favor from Dr. Hahn about that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock.
Just to clarify for members who were not present or who are not up to date on this, these are things that are already allowed. Students from within the state or out of the state can pay a tuition and attend. There are already policies and regulations that outline what that looks like and that outline what transportation looks like for those. So, we're not talking right now about changing any of that. Just to clear that up for everyone, what we're talking about is the FCPS employee rate. FCPS, we have, I believe, 59 students or somewhere in that number, 59 to 69. I can't remember the exact number of students whose employees of ours currently pay a discounted rate so that they can bring their students. So, this is seen as a benefit for them and the idea was to, or the thought process and discussion around that was, is there a way to maybe strengthen that to make it more of a benefit so that we can hopefully retain some additional of our folks that may see that as a benefit? So, the rates for in-state, out-of-state, and FCPS employee are on that document. We're not talking about changing those policies or regulations that outline what currently happens. We're just talking about should we change the rate that is currently charged to our FCPS employees? I think that the, some of the details that Mrs. White gave, I like your ideas. I think you have some good ideas. I think it may be a little bit too cumbersome, too many layers to it and I do also have some concerns based on what Dr. Hammer shared about his previous division about just opening it up, no tuition for anyone. Someone could get a job here, bring their kids here and pay nothing, you know, that could lead to overcrowding issues. I do think it, in my opinion, is something that should be rewarded with a little bit of service and time that employees have put in. So, I'm in favor, I'm opposed to this amendment, but I have a different amendment that I'll go after we vote on this one, but I would be more in favor of a, something where it's a flat rate and then it's discounted at a certain point with a certain number of years of service. So, that's what I'll be bringing forward next, but I'm against this amendment currently.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Other comments before I share some thoughts?
Would agree, Mr. Comstock, around some of the concerns that I have with the amendment specifically. I think there's some tweaks to it and then the second portion of it, I have some concern around this staff developing policy and regulation. I think that's our role, so we'd love to see what that policy and regulation is specifically. I guess from a larger perspective, the tuition rates of employees, and I know some of us have talked about this, other divisions may do, may have waived tuition for their employees either as a benefit or oftentimes as kind of an ADM or a membership gain there. And so, we're in a position that's kind of the opposite of that where we have a high ADM compared to our capacity. And so, I think that's a little bit of a difference for us and something that we should really take into consideration. When I looked at other division policies, just a few earlier, a lot of those policies about waived tuition actually tie in relation to ADM, so, or to capacity. And so, if they were at, if a school is at capacity or overcapacity, then that tuition fee would not be waived. So, I think that might be something that we should consider. From a more macro perspective, I guess my, I'm inclined to support a waiving of tuition because I think anything that we can do to support recruitment and retention is great. However, I do feel like this board has been brought at least a few ideas around recruitment and retention that are similar to this dollar amount and the feedback from the board has been that we want to do a study or we want to do a survey or we want to do research or we want to spend more time to have staff develop ideas around whether that would work or not. And this has had no study, it's had no survey, it's not had staff do research around it. So, and it seems to me that after looking at the data around who this would help, it would be teachers and that's great and I'm supportive of that, but I also think some of the other ideas would have helped our school nutrition line staff, would have helped our classified staff and bus drivers and I don't know that this one, thinking about who make up those groups, most of those folks are not traveling in our county to work just based upon their makeup. So, I feel like if we're moving forward in this direction, I would just continue to implore this board to consider other recruitment and retention strategies, some of which have been brought before the board before, and not discard those as well. Any further discussion on the amendment, which is two parts? One, to waive the tuition fee with the exception of a one-time registration fee of no more than $500. That would waive FCPS employee fee of $1,782.80 that's in the proposed motion. And then, the second part would be to direct staff to develop a regulation or policy around any capacity or overcrowding issues. If not, we will proceed to a vote and it may be helpful if we had a roll call vote on this one.
Sorry. So, right now, just to be clear, we are voting on the waiving the tuition fee with the exception of the $500.
Correct.
As a registration fee.
And in the way that I heard the motion, and Mrs. White, if that's wrong, I heard that the two parts were in the same motion.
Correct.
Okay. And so, we would be voting on the waiving of the tuition fee as well as the development of a regulation or policy around overcrowding.
All for one.
All together.
All right. Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
No.
Mr. Comstock?
No.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mr. Monk?
No. The amendment fails. We have before us a recommendation to approve the tuition and fees as presented. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to make an amendment, amending the FCPS employee tuition rate to a flat rate of $1,500, which would be waived for any employee with three years of service.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded that we amend the motion to have the FCPS employee rate be a flat rate of $1,500 and it be waived should the employee have three years of service. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock, I think, wanted to discuss, it's his motion. I'll let him discuss first and then go to you, Mr. Atkins.
Just rationale behind that, the $1,500 keeps it closer. I believe it's a 14-something currently, so it keeps it closer, so it's not as much of an impact for our current employees who are taking advantage of this and bringing their students currently. And then, as in terms of the three years of service, you know, that's how long it takes for a teacher to be tenured. If they've put in some time to us and they've dedicated and they're staying here in their career, I just feel like that's a nice benefit to offer them. So, that's the rationale behind it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Atkins.
Keeping in mind this motion, I do think it does help with employee retention. My concern is that, to your point, Mr. Monk, that it doesn't reach the plethora of our teachers and our staff as far as retaining the majority. This only kind of focuses on a few of our staff, you know, and I mean, we do have a retention problem across the board. Once again, I'm going to ask, does this also cover part-time employees or is it just full-time?
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Dr. Hammer, what is our, the FCPS employee that the current payment is that reflect part-time or full-time? Do we know?
I'm looking at Ms. Camery, it looks like both.
Okay.
So, this would also help impact our bus drivers, our nutritional staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And this would be for the ones that travel out of area?
That do not currently live in Frederick County, correct.
Right.
I'd just like to see some numbers on how many people that would be, but.
Well, yeah, we have those numbers. It's 16, right?
Okay.
Yeah, we have those numbers. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Atkins, to your point, I think the likelihood that maybe some of our classified staff would take advantage of this benefit, just my personal opinion would be that maybe it's lower than our professional staff. Further discussion on the amendment, which is to, we know the amendment, I can restate if we need to.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Atkins, for the comments and I agree, we need to be looking for more creative ways like this to offer benefits to retain employees at all levels. I think this is something small we can do right now, but I know we've asked staff before and we want to keep asking staff to, let's keep coming up with ideas, bringing ideas to the table and things that we can do to keep the staff that we have.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Additional comments from board members around the amendment?
All right, appreciate it. Would agree with the sentiments. I think we've got to start somewhere with it, so I'll be supporting the motion this evening. I just would hope that board members would, this would be a continuous process that we consider creative ways in which we could engage in the continued recruitment and retention of not only our teachers, which is heavily needed, but also our classified staff as well. I did want to ask, similar to Mr. Atkins' question, Mr. Comstock, was the intent of the motion to be three years of service or three years of continuous service? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but.
That I do not know.
Okay.
Three years of continuous service.
Okay. Without objection, we can make an adjustment to his motion and, Mr. Atkins, you second is, is that okay?
I'll keep my second.
Okay. Mr. Lake?
Yeah, I got sort of a question, I guess. We do policy and we hand it over to the superintendent and then he creates the how and how he's going to do this. On this particular issue, I'd really like to hear what we discussed earlier in the other motion about how he would do this, how he would consider the schools crowded or not and how he would consider the transportation issues and do we get that checkmark from competition committees? Or do we just vote on it now, make it a policy or a working policy and then kind of assume that the superintendent's just going to work it out? I'm not real comfortable with that, but, Dr. Hammer, is this, I guess the question is, is this doable?
Dr. Hammer?
Yeah, so as Mr. Comstock mentioned, we currently do have a policy in place. I'm almost positive we have a regulation as well, if I'm not mistaken. But, as far as I'm concerned with this is that we can make it work because essentially we're just adjusting the amount of pay and tuition for the staff that are currently in our school division. One of the things that we are going to have to take into consideration more than just myself, Mr. Lake, is as a board, you will have to take this into consideration if this does increase the amount of students that are in our school division that don't currently live in Frederick County. So, as we continue to take a look at our capacity of our schools, as we continue to look at expansion and growth, that is going to be a factor that we are going to essentially be questioned about because those are going to be students that we're going to be adding to our school system. However, as you all have mentioned, it's going to be which battle do we want to fight? Because we are currently dealing with a teacher shortage. We are currently dealing with a classified staff shortage. And if this is going to attract new staff and it's going to keep staff here, which in my previous experience, as Mr. Comstock has mentioned, it does attract staff and it does incentivize staff, so it will add more staff to us. Now, will it solve our teacher shortage and our classified shortage? No, but it will definitely chip away at that and that's something that we can definitely take a look at. As I mentioned earlier, if we start to identify schools that we're not going to add kids to, I think that will definitely cause some issues because it's going to, again, be a counter change for us, right? Because if we start to say, well, all these schools are off limits, we only have four middle schools and three high schools, and like I said, the three high schools are already at full capacity. So, then what's going to happen when if a student is with us in elementary school, they come to middle and now they're in high school? And if we say, well, now you got to pay tuition, again, it's going to be a counter process. So, for us, I would say we would just do this across the board in regards to the $1,500 and then the three years of service and then we just, we deal with the overcrowding because those students are part of our school division, you know? And I also want to make sure that we are taking that into consideration because you all are having some really thorough and great conversations about this, but we're talking about kids and we're talking about kids that we will educate, we're talking about kids that we will be taking care of, and we're talking about kids that no matter if you are Frederick County resident or another county resident or a state of West Virginia or what have you, you're our student and we're not going to treat you any differently. So, I want to make sure that we're very careful about that. As Mrs. Camery mentioned, I think like she wants to come up and say something, as Mrs. Camery mentioned, we're only talking about 47 students right now, 69, 47 families. Thank you for that correction, but it potentially could increase, so it is something we'll have to take into account. Mrs. Camery, please.
Yeah, I just want to add two small things. In the process now is a principal has to accept a student that's outside the division to say that they can accept them into their school. So, you may want to consider if you want to eliminate that altogether. So, and that's for anyone coming in, out-of-state, in-state, employee. So, that's one thing that we currently do that you have to kind of either waive that now on or not, but the other thing is special needs students. But the other thing is special needs students, because we do charge more if they require more services. So that's the other piece. I don't know if your 1,500 was flat across the board, whether they need additional services or not, but currently it goes higher due to that. So that's two other things you might want to consider, I just want to add those.
Thank you. So that would be something we would have to take into consideration as well.
No, I think that all of these things, Mr. Chairman, are covered in Regulation 406-RB. If board members would like to reference that, you're welcome to. It talks about transportation, they're responsible for bringing their own transportation. It discusses all of the questions that you've had, Mr. Lake, and other board members. The admission of non-resident students shall not impact the individual student, individual school enrollment in such a manner as to require additional teachers or courses so as to be able to educate that child. Like, all of the questions that you've had are already answered, they're already in place. The only thing that we're doing is changing the dollar amount on the fee and providing a benefit to teachers who have served us for three or more years. That's the only recommended change. Everything else is already outlined and covered, so I'm not putting any extra requirements on staff other than keeping track of how many years of service our employees have had so that they can get that added benefit of doing what they're already doing in terms of bringing their children here.
Thank you, Mr. Comstock. Additional questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Atkins?
To Ms. Camery's concerns, with this amendment, how would we address the waiving of, you know, the principal's purview of letting a student in and addressing the special needs concerns?
Yep, so, Mr. Com, or, thank you, Mr. Atkins, appreciate the question. The way that I heard the motion, and I think I heard Mr. Comstock share, is that we would simply be taking the dollar on the tuition chart now, adjusting it from the, I believe it was 1782, 20, quote me on that, one of those, a similar number, adjusting that to 1,500 and then adding in the waiving of the three years service, continuous service. That would mean that the principal would still have that authority, we'd still have the same provisions in place for students who required any special services. All of the other language of the existing policy would be the same. So the only change would be the 200-some-dollar or 2,000-some-dollar change and then the waiving of the three years is the way I heard the motion. So hopefully that would help alleviate any concerns that might be out there. The existing regulation would remain the same.
Mr. Chairman?
Dr. Hummer, short.
And thank you, Mr. Atkins, for the question, and thank you, Mr. Lake, earlier, too. If I could make a recommendation for you to take into consideration would be, as Mr. Comstock is saying, is you have a motion on the floor in regards to adjusting the tuition, but if you would like for the staff, myself and my staff, to go back and take a look at the current policy and regulation to see if there is any sort of adjustments after the fact, we can. I don't think it impacts your decision right now. Also, too, if I can just, again, just make mention, this is an indifferent statement, that when it comes to students with disabilities, some of them come with some very significant needs. Just, again, just a statement. And as Mr. Comstock mentioned, there are some students that require one-on-one nurses and a one-on-one aide, and if we're starting to add all these positions on, that $16,000 is going to turn into $100,000 to educate that child. So it's definitely something you're going to want to consider as a board, and I would strongly recommend that you thoroughly consider that piece because it could significantly impact funding as well as staffing. So just want to make sure that you're all aware of that, but we're more than happy to go back and take a look at this after the fact if that is the will of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Hummer. Just to clarify, should the amendment pass as presented, which is the change of the number from the proposed number to the 15 and the addition of the waiving of the fee with three years of continuous service, the existing latitude that staff have to make recommendations or potential denials would not change, is that...
As far as I understand, the motion on the floor, yes, sir.
Any further discussion? So with that, if the regulation is going to stay the same, I think this could be a potential benefit for folks, and we've got to start somewhere. Recognize that we're not in the same space as other districts that are looking for additional students and to add to their membership. But as you said, Dr. Hummer, we have kind of a two-parted challenge. We have capacity challenge, we have a staffing challenge, and so trying to address one with this. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote on the amendment, which is simply to change that dollar amount to a flat rate of $1,500 from the existing or proposed dollar amount and then waive the employee tuition, the tuition rate for employees who have three years of continuous service or more. All right, we'll do a roll call vote again. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we are voting on the amendment.
Before we vote, may I?
Mr. Comstock.
Just a point of clarification, the, where all of that outlined is a regulation and the superintendent has the authority to review and adjust regulations as necessary. So I think making this slight amendment, that there's a couple of words within that regulation that I think this would impact, but the rest of that regulation seemed to hold well for all of the other concerns that were brought forward, but staff could certainly evaluate that and Dr. Hummer has the authority to adjust that as needed, if needed, to tighten this up a little bit, so.
Agree, I agree, appreciate the clarity there. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
No.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, the amendment has passed, and so now we have a motion before us, which is to approve the proposed tuition and fees with the amendment that just passed of the FCPS employee-student tuition rates as presented. One would be $1,500 and then the other would be waiving that fee after three years of continuous service to the school division. Any discussion, Mr. Atkins?
No, I've made a motion to approve, yeah.
So the motion's on the floor?
Yeah.
So any discussion? All right, if not, we'll proceed to vote on the motion as amended. And we'll go ahead with a roll call vote on that one, just to save...
Has anyone seconded the motion?
It had, it was seconded, I think, early on. I don't recall who.
Let me go, I can go back.
I think Mr. Atkins may have done it.
Mr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. Comstock.
Yeah, the action was recommend the full board approve the 2023-2024 tuition rates and student fees as presented, but now it's got the amended that we just voted on with the approved amendment.
We need our students here to keep us straight.
Amen, amen, there's probably students. So we are voting on the motion as amended. Ms. Martin, the motion is that we would approve the student fees and tuition rates with the amendment that FCPS employees, students tuition rate would be $1,500 for those with three years or fewer. Would be waived for three years of continuous service, we'll say it that way, we'll do the opposite. Any further discussion? Great, let's proceed to vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
No.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mr. Monk?
Yes. All right, the motion carries.
The last action item to come out of the Finance Committee meeting was recommend approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on May 11, 2023.
All right, is there recommend, or, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been properly seconded to approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting that was held on May 11, 2023. Any discussion? Seeing none or all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries. Next, the item before us is the School Board and the School Superintendent Communication Plan. Dr. Hummer?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry.
Before we do that, it's my understanding that a board member who votes in favor of a motion can bring it back up for reconsideration.
Yes, let's...
Do you want to do that at the end, or...
Yeah, let's do that at the end, if you're okay with that, Mr. Atkins. Okay. Superintendent Hummer, yes.
Yes. So there were two things that I wanted to add to this. I did mention it in my superintendent reports in regards to this communication plan. The first thing that I would like to add is that at the end of the document, I added in there that this communication plan can be reviewed and adjusted by the School Board or myself, that I just added in there that it would have to go before the full board before any changes go into place. Just to make sure that we were open and full disclosure in regards to the items on here. The other piece I would like to mention is, a lot of this, we're pretty much already doing. I would say 99.9% of it, besides it being adopted by you. As I mentioned, communication's very important to me. I think it is an integral part of our, the success of our students and to make sure that we continue to work well together. So, again, I want to make sure that I'm addressing all the questions that come about with this document and I'm up for discussion.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Hummer. And for board members, I know we've discussed this at length and those stakeholders that are watching as well, this is a document that really will help guide both of our groups and something that we've requested, have talked about, and as Dr. Hummer, you mentioned, I think has gone pretty well over the last several weeks. I feel like our communication among board members, among interaction with the superintendent, has been great and so want to thank you for that, want to thank board members for that. And this is something that can be adjusted as needed if a situation arises, but really something that we've worked collaboratively on and really just kind of a guiding document for us as we move forward. Any discussion on the communication plan that's before us, before we proceed to any action?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to reiterate the things that you just referenced and I do want to give kudos to and thank you, Dr. Hummer. I feel like communication with the board has been fantastic and I appreciate. I feel like you're keeping us up to date on everything in a very nice way. This plan, just for those of you who are not familiar, we had a spring training session and all of this was discussed at length and it's really just putting a formal process to what we are trying to do and striving to do and serve as a reminder and also serve as a model for new board members to help with onboarding because sometimes when you join a new board, you're inundated with information and you don't know what to do, and so this is just a helpful guide, kind of formalizing that process. So thank you, Dr. Hummer, for your work on that and for the excellent communication.
All right, any further comments? What is the pleasure of the board related to the communication plan?
I'd move that we would adopt the School Board Superintendent Communication Plan as presented. Mr. Chairman?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to adopt the School Board Superintendent Communication Plan as presented. Discussion? All right, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, the motion carries. All right, Mr. Atkins, you head?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring back to the board Policy 116P for reconsideration. This is the one where we talked about votes and tie votes and tie breaking.
Second.
All right, so a motion to reconsider the vote around the passage of the revision of Policy 116P, bylaws, board minutes, recording votes, and tie votes. If I remember correctly, Mr. Atkins did vote to pass that motion, it was seconded there. So reconsidering that, is there any discussion around the vote to reconsider? So we would have to, just for board, the, understanding of board members, we would have to vote and pass the reconsideration before it would come back. So right now, we're discussing whether we should or should not reconsider that policy, so discussion around that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Atkins?
So the reason I'm bringing this back for reconsideration to the board is we do need some kind of clarity on tiebreakers. I understand that this is just a legal reference change. However, the, instead of just kicking it down the road, kicking the can down the road, I do believe that we do need some kind of clarity. Tonight, we've made several motions and several votes and to Mr. Lake's point, what if somebody did abstain? What if somebody wasn't here? I think that we do need some kind of clarity, whether we table this for later and bring it up at a later time after we've had time to think about it. But rather than being negligent in our duties and just passing this, I believe that we should put forth some way of breaking that tie vote.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. I'll share, if it's okay, I'll...
Yeah, go ahead.
Agree, Mr. Atkins, I think there needs to be some resolution and further reviewing. Appreciate Ms. White bringing it to further light there. As it were now, if we were to have a tie on the board, then if the full board is not present and there is a tie, then it would move to the next meeting that the full board is present. If the full board were present, and maybe there was an abstention, then if there was a tie, that the, whatever the motion, the amendment, or the action item would fail. And so I think that one change that could happen to the policy, and as we were chatting, I was actually thinking about recommending this, go through our process for policy moving down the road. But my personal thought would be for us to remove the the languaging around selecting a tie vote that's provided by Code 22.1-75 and that it live with Robert's rules, which is what our process is currently. And so just removing that language there, talking about selection of a tie vote. I think those first few sentences there around if there is the full board not present and moving on, I think that is remain and helpful there. I don't think that we should select any individual tiebreaker and give any individual more authority on this board than others or have someone outside of the board be a tiebreaker. So as we move forward, I think that's something that we could look at into and that would be my personal recommendation. Don't know what the pleasure of other board members is, but I think we have a process in place currently. We have not selected a tiebreaker, so we know what will happen if there is a tiebreaker. I think the question is, does the board want to have a tiebreaker moving forward? I've shared my opinion and had planned to bring that. If we wanted to discuss it at a later time, if we want to discuss it today, I guess, is the question that Mr. Atkins is bringing.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Comstock?
I don't think there's a need to reconsider because even reconsidering, this policy is already in place. This is what happens. We're not amending that policy, so I don't think there's a need to reconsider the policy. We're just updating the legal reference so that we're in line with Virginia code. I do think maybe there is a need to visit this as a separate new business item, old business, whatever you want to call it. We need to look into that code of Virginia that's referenced, 22175. I've got it pulled up and there are six different references within the code of who those tiebreakers can be. So I think it's something for us to look into further, but I don't think there's a need to reconsider this at the moment because even reconsidering it, we still have the same situation, we're not solving the problem. But I do think we should take a look at it and revisit it.
And so, Mr. Atkins, would you and Ms. White two second it as well? There's a commitment to the board to bring this before on the next agenda item, is that helpful or... Mr. Atkins, short.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sir.
To address the vice chair's concerns as well, you know, you just brought forth where you would like it amended as well. I think not approving it would be the way to go for now and tabling it till the next meeting would probably be the best action for the board. And so we do have that discussion.
It appears, Mr. Chairman, that a tiebreaker is someone who gets chosen by the County Board of Supervisors and serves a four-year term, and then they get to cast a tiebreaking vote. So I don't think this is even something within our purview. Again, I think it's something we should revisit, figure out, and get the code updated like we've already agreed to do so that we're in line with state code.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
I don't think, I think the public elected us to be on the School Board, not the County Board of Supervisors. So I would like to leave that within our hands. So if we did want to go ahead and revisit that, I think that would behoove this board.
Mr. Atkins, I agree. I think the way I heard Mr. Comstock's statement is that there's a state code that provides statute for who can serve as a tiebreaker and then who selects that tiebreaker. And agree, we want to make sure, from my perspective, that this board retains all the authority that it can. It would be my recommendation, again, that we move forward as we'd planned this evening, allow us as individual board members to gain some further... allow us as individual board members to gain some further insight on this specific policy and the state, uh, code around it. Allow staff to provide some insight as well, and then come back at our next board meeting with some options that, um, the board could consider, and that way we're making a, a long-term decision. So not disagreeing with the, the premise of, of reconsidering, I just think, um, from my personal perspective, having some additional information around it, um, I would appreciate that. And, and in the meantime, if we were to call an emergency meeting, there would be no tiebreaker. It would be as, as I presented earlier, where, um. Mm-hmm. So we have something in place before the next meeting. We've already kind of got what our current system is, just allowing us to gain some additional context, I think would be helpful. And so not, not agreeing with, not disagreeing with, uh, the premise there, but just think maybe providing additional meeting for us may be helpful, so. We do have a motion to reconsider on the table, and it has been seconded. You, I might ask you to. I might ask you to withdraw. If you don't want to withdraw, then we'll vote on it, but either way is fine, whichever you.
Not going to withdraw.
Okay, perfect. Any further discussion on the motion to reconsider? So, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Atkins' motion is that we reconsider, uh, which means we are now voting on whether we want to discuss again, um, Policy one sixteen P, School Board bylaws, which the only item that is presented there is the section code change of, of one sixteen P. So we're voting on the motion to reconsider whether we want to continue talking about it now, or whether we want to, um, have another discussion around it at our next board meeting. It's been made and seconded that we reconsider. If you vote to reconsider, then we are going to discuss it again. If you vote not to reconsider, then the action previously taken by the board will stand, which is that we pass the, the policy. All right, let's do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lake?
No.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
No.
Mr. Hester?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Mr. Monk?
No. All right, the motion to reconsider fails. The policy that was previously adopted by the board will stand, um, but I will share, Mr. Atkins, Mrs. White, I think this is something that we can look for on our next agenda, and appreciate you, um, bringing the concern forward, so thank you. All right, with that, moves us to end. Board member comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
Spoke a lot tonight. Um, I, I just want to address, uh, you know, some of the comments that were brought up by the public today. I, I think moving forward on our next year's, um, budget cycle, I know that we've talked about it a little bit so far, but my commitment is still to, um, see what we can do to help out the classified staff, to, to retain them and make them, uh, definitely feel more appreciated within our school community. Once again, um, still pushing for CTE as well, and, um, that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins, Mrs. White.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to congratulate our new building administrators and welcome, um, the one that's returning, and highlight that we have female leaders, um, at the building level, and I think that that's incredible. I think women and parents and mothers have a powerful voice, um, and I'm looking very much forward to, um, watching them grow and lead our division. And congratulations to our students and their achievements. They're incredible to see, um, the collision special, specialist, I can't recall exactly what it was, but, um, to have one of our students go to Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia is huge, and even though they don't necessarily have a secondary education, you know, there, there's all kinds of things they can do in NASCAR and racing, and that's just really, really exciting to see those kind of opportunities for our students. And I share the commitment, commitment with Mr. Atkins for our classified staff. I think that, that we have a way to go, to do, to support them and retain them, and, and thank them, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Other board member comments, are there, Mr. Lake?
Yeah, I have a few. Um, first to, uh, Dr. Hummer, you, some pretty good selections there tonight that you introduced this to. Really good.
Thank you.
Want to congratulate our, um, student achievers. Kind of takes me back a very long time ago, but, uh, my junior and senior year in high school, I spent out working in a garage. Only went to school half a day, worked half a day. So to see young people still getting that opportunity, and then getting the opportunity to compete, regional, state, national, uh, it's just, says volumes about education and where it is today. So really, uh, congratulate those. Uh, went to an event at Indian Hollow Elementary School, I'm going to say a week and a half ago, maybe, to honor a young man who is going through a medical, um, situation, and the whole school was out to honor him. So, Charlie, if you're there, we got you, and, uh, keep it strong, buddy, and keep it going. After that, I went to Bass Hoover. Let's see, a night or two after that, I went to Bass Hoover for a fourth and fifth grade percussion concert. Fourth and fifth grade, you, you can think what you want, but those kids knocked it out of the park. They have a music teacher out at Bass Hoover, Ms. Sherman, that, uh, those kids, those are her kids, and they get her. And there was forty-five minutes of, yeah, we had about, I think about twenty-four kids, but every kid played a different instrument, and a song would end, and then you would just see this, like that. And these kids went over here, these kids went over here, these kids came down, sat down front, these kids went back. There was not a wasted moment the entire night, and it was all percussion, all kinds of percussion instruments. It was amazing. I was, I was really impressed. Let's see, last week, uh, Mr. Monk and I went to two, um, Laurel Ridge graduation ceremonies, and, um, one was for medical sciences, I, I, primarily nurses, and then the second graduation, uh, was on strictly academic. We'll be getting a snapshot from Laurel Ridge, which tells us the breakdown. Laurel Ridge services eight jurisdictions, um, of which Frederick County is one, and, and this snapshot breaks it down per, uh, per jurisdiction about how many students and who and what. But the, the initial snapshot that I got from the college, uh, there were seventy-nine, seventy-nine high school kids that graduated from the community college with an Associate of Arts degree before they graduate from high school. Seventy-nine of them. And so that, and they also gave me some governor scholar, uh, figures of, in the fall of twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-two, there were two thousand four hundred and thirty-two students at Laurel Ridge that have some kind of, um, college credit. There, uh, in the spring, uh, this spring, there was two thousand and fifty students total that have some kind of governor scholar credit. And the community college keeps beating its, it doesn't have to beat a drum, that drum has beaten itself. Two years at Laurel, Laurel Ridge costs just over ninety-two hundred dollars if you just go there straight, not out of high school, not anything. Our col, our high school kids spent just over, a tick over three thousand dollars to get a two-year associate's degree at our local community college, with a lot of the classes being taught in their high schools. If you know what the college cost is for, like, UVA and Virginia Tech, and William &amp; Mary, and VCU, Randolph Macon, you're talking about just an unbelievable savings of money. And one of my favorite things every year at the, um, um, graduations is to see those parents in the stands, they're yelling their guts out, jumping up and down, totally out of control, and when, when you go up to them, they say, "I saved fifty grand, I saved fifty grand." And they're so happy about the school system offering dual enrollment, and now there's, their kid that is just getting their high school diploma is a junior somewhere at some college. With the guaranteed acceptance program, it's, it's almost assured. Uh, the community college has, the, the student will know right up front whether or not that credited course is going to be accepted at college. So I want to tell you, dual enrollment, that is the deal. Every, anybody that has a junior or a senior in high school should be really looking at dual enrollment. It's, uh, just one of those great benefits, just want to highlight it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Thank you for highlighting that for sure. Other comments from board members? Wonderful, and I, I know I shared earlier, just wanted to recognize those jump, uh, rip-for-harp schools. I know the administrators put some time and effort into that, as well as students and parents and guardians, and that as well, and, uh, and then those skills, just say, students. The, the conference itself, they, at the state level is, is great, but nationally, I had an opportunity to do some work with them, and, and just, it is phenomenal to see the high-skill, high-demand, um, jobs that these students are getting, and many of them last year actually got job offers on, on the ground, making more than, uh, many of us may make, uh, for those careers. And if you look at Interstate eighty-one, you know that there is a need for automotive maintenance and collision repair specifically, and so greatly looking forward to them hopefully returning to our community and, and serving it for, um, years to come. All right, with that, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Atkins?
Like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Motion's been properly seconded and adjourned. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you.